We're done.
Okay, all right, we call meeting the order at five thirty. Five twenty-nine. Um, we'll start with some announcements. Fall special town meeting is this Monday, November third. Start at seven P M in the annex, but the doors will open at six or six thirty.
It's advertised for six thirty, but I think six fifteen-ish will help.
Okay.
Check already.
Make sure you're here early enough so that you don't have to wait in line. Uh, the finance committee booklet is available online. There's also hard copies in town office, building, library, post doc, post office. Um, so read up. Uh, Sage Center Lunch and Learn that was held today, fall town meeting question and answer forum. They go be well?
Very well, yeah, good turnout and always good discussion.
Yeah, good people.
Excellent people.
Thanks, Eric, good food.
Always, yeah.
Yep. Um, next Monday, um, not this coming Monday, but following Monday, November tenth. The, um, West Newbury Veterans Film Stories of Service and Story Rock is going to be held at G A R Library. Uh, this is a film that, uh, a local student, or he just graduated, a film student. Um, put together, uh, interviews with town veterans, so it's gonna be a great event. Sure you come and check it out. Uh, Kentucky Regional School District State of the Schools meeting Tuesday, November eighteenth at six P M. The superintendent holds this meeting every year to kind of give us a preview of what the budget's gonna look like for the next year. Um, annual holiday tree lighting Wednesday, December third, six thirty, at Training Field. And finally, call the volunteers. There's a complete list of current openings on the homepage on the volunteer tab. Uh, regular business, item A, public comment. Anyone here wishing to make a public comment? Okay, uh, let's move on to item B, town manager updates.
Right, first update, I just wanted to let you know I had attended the, uh, trainings last week. One was, uh, last Tuesday at Bentley College. Uh, with Matt Department of Revenue, it's the annual West Newbury Municipal Law Training. Uh, myself, the town accountant, and the chief assessor, attended that down in Walt Dam, very, very worthwhile. Um, uh, really packed with a lot of information, a lot of, uh, you know, recent cases. Cases that have been decided in the courts in the last year, as well as, uh, recent legislation and pending legislation, so that's, uh, really important for us to keep our ear to the ground, um. Uh, definitely some interesting takeaways that were, uh, relevant, uh, and then last Thursday Rebecca and I went out to Davin's for an all-day, uh, conference by the Mass Municipal Human Resources Association, which is also in affiliation with MMA, uh, that was extremely worthwhile, uh, we were there all day, they had brought in a number of, uh, uh, either statewide or even nationally active speakers, it's very substantial program, uh, going into it. I frankly thought it would be kind of our colleagues, uh, often these things are. Uh, but it was really, they brought in some pretty heavy hitter speakers who had really impressive, uh, presentations, some really good advice and, uh, with both of these seminars, uh, or workshops, the, uh, training materials, the slide decks are all made available to all the presenters, so, uh, uh, downloaded all those as resources, uh, and, uh, yeah, very good use of time. Been a tough timing, always, I mean, two in the same week was, uh, you know, constrained in the schedule, but, uh, were definitely worthwhile. Uh, second item, the capital improvements program, uh, we have gotten all of the, uh, inputs. We started working on this, um, back in July and, uh, you know, reached out to all the departments who are involved, as well as the page administration and, um, what I have up here, and I'm not gonna go through in great detail because I don't think there's really time tonight, or at least not at this stage, so I'll give just a brief overview and then if, if you wanna, depending on how late we're here, if you wanna circle back toward the end of the meeting, I don't wanna push off the other things that we have on the agenda, but uh, as I think the board is aware, we have at this point fully migrated to the so-called ClearGov platform. And so I just wanna give a couple of, of, just to illustrate kind of what this, uh, does and part of why we're pretty excited about it, so I'm gonna turn off the historical so that this is only showing F Y twenty-seven and forward. Uh, we've pushed it out a couple of years, uh, I think we're gonna push it out further because you can see we've got in the future category. It's just enormous, which kind of skews the, the numbers, so we'll be, uh, turning that one off. Actually, let me just do a share screen for those who are remote. Alright, so what this allows us to do, uh, once the data is all put in is, uh, we can toggle by, uh, by fiscal year, by department. Uh, we can get reports on, uh, rejected funding sources, obviously, that's all projections, it's all subject to change. Just based on kind of, uh, really my best guess as to whether things might come from, uh, you know, stabilization or free cash or their C P A funds or grant funds. Uh, so that's what this, uh, you know, kind of color coding, or actually this is color coded by department. Uh, and then you can go to this and see the, the funding source. Again, I'll turn off the historical and the future because I think that's more, uh, more focused report. Uh, one thing that's interesting, if you toggle off water, if I select all and then uncheck water, this gives a really, you can see that of the, you know, ninety-one out of the hundred twenty-two projects listed in here are non-water projects. But in terms of dollar amount, this is actually, let me put fu- future back on, so that's, it was, uh, so those ninety-one requests on the town side represent about nine point three million uh, out of a total forty-nine million, so now keep in mind on water, that includes we're carrying funds in there for potential development of a new water source. And then in the event a new water source was developed and then a treatment plant was needed, which is, you know, can not be known until six months after the theoretical water source developed. That's a significant amount of that water money, so we could toggle those off and that would take about, uh, sixteen million out of here, but still even without that, the, uh, you know, I think this helps to illustrate the degree to which, um, kind of the, the future water capital needs are, uh, really outsized the, the townless. Now, this doesn't account for if there was a new school or if there was a, you know, substantial, uh, you know, top to bottom renovation or base school, it does carry the projects that we, uh, expect to project, uh, propose for F Y twenty-seven. Uh, we've had some really good, uh, meetings with the Kentucky, uh, facilities and, uh, you know, we have a good idea of what we're gonna be proposing for next year, um.
And those are the Band-Aid projects?
Those are the Band-Aid projects, correct, yeah, so let me show you how that works, uh, I'll just do F Y twenty-seven and, uh, I think I've got for departments, I think I've got everything booked for water. So, right now, and this is, you know, obviously we're in October, uh, it's roughly little over, right around three months from now that we'd actually be submitting article requests, so there's a process ahead with a uh, committee review, um, to really refine the numbers and what we're actually gonna propose, but what's in here right now is, uh, is it showing? See, so right now we've got for next year uh, for page school, I know we have some, uh, work on uh, the, uh, fire pump. Um, let's see, I should, I should have teed these up specifically on is, uh, I'm surprised by the one, what it's showing is, uh, one point six, because I think it was more like a million. Uh, yeah, no, that's what it is, okay, if I, if it is right, it's a million, if I do select all, that's gonna put the water back in, that's right about a million dollars. So, um, what I'm not understanding is why it's showing one point six there, because it's not yeah, here, this is more like it. So this is showing, uh, penciled in for next year, about a hundred and seventy thousand for facilities. Uh, four forty-five for fire, that's a, that's a bigger number than, than I expected, but it reflects some updates recently. Highway, one thirty-five, police, one thirty-one, that includes the cruiser. Uh, and then water department, I did go ahead and pencil in, uh, the engineering for what I would think would be the next capital project of, of Maple Street. The water department has not submitted that, that is on the list, but in terms of timing, they have not said they're gonna propose engineering, but I do think that for discussion, we need to, you know, these mains are gonna need to be replaced and, uh, I think we should at least keep that on the table for discussion this cycle and if we decide, if the water commission decides not to pursue that for next year, that's fine, that can be pushed out. But I think it ought to be affirmatively discussed, not simply overlooked. Um, there, there was a comment made at the recent water commission meeting about two weeks ago that, oh, take on the next project in ten or fifteen years when we pay off the current one, and I'm thinking to myself, first of all, the current one's not gonna be paid off in ten or fifteen years, it's more like thirty years, and secondly, you really can't just
There'll be nothing left in thirty.
Right, like, so, so anyhow, that, that speaks to a bigger discussion on capital planning for water, but uh, within each one of these, there's, one, one of the things that's so attractive about this, um, software is that the breakdown of funding source is much more specific than what we have ever been able to do until this time. And for instance, that allows us to, uh, include projects that are not locally funded. So you, you'll see numbers that don't align with what would actually be put to the taxpayer because we're able to include things in here that are grant funded, or for instance, with the Middle Street Bridge, we're able to show the true cost of a project, including what came from state grants, what came from Newburyport and so forth, so I think it's gonna, you know, it gives a much more accurate, uh, presentation of what capital projects are. Whereas the older Excel model was really focused on what we expected to get from stabilization, so for instance, the Middle Street Bridge and the Excel sheet showed six hundred thousand because that's what had been appropriated for, uh, from stabilization. That is in no way, uh, a complete cost, so this, this, uh, ClearGov platform allows us to give the true cost. But then to break down where the funding is coming from, so you have, uh, you know, both the true total cost as well as the, uh, breakdown of what, where the money would come from. Whether from stabilization or free cash or, uh, or C P A or grants, uh, similar with the uh, uh, crockwalk improvements on Route one thirteen. Where to this point, a substantial amount of that money's come from state grants or budget earmarks. Uh, we're able to put in, uh, for instance, the, uh, survey and conceptual planning work that was done for the library town hall crossing as a twenty-five thousand dollar expense, but it's shown as grant funding, so it doesn't, um, you know, it, it doesn't overstate what taxpayers think, because the taxpayer hasn't paid anything, just it came from state money, so anyhow, uh, it's, uh, so as of, uh, as of tonight, it is, uh, fully updated, reflect all the input we've received from all the departments. And so I will be, what I can do from here is, uh, I can run a lot of reports where I can export this data in various formats to PDF that is then, you know, that facility's getting circulated around by email and getting it to review by, uh, the select board and the various committees who are involved with, uh, the capital planning process, so I just wanted to give this preview tonight, uh, this is the time of year where we, um, get the updated, kind of multi-year capital program in circulation. And then between November, December, January, it's basically the time window to really look at what's in there for F Y twenty-seven. See if there's a kind of broad support that those are time-sensitive projects and then by the time the warrant was, were closed for the spring town meeting, there'd be article requests with the backup and the, uh, uh, you know, cost estimates and so forth, so. One other thing I didn't mention, which, uh, which is pretty cool, is that you can, uh, clip uh, documents to this, so if, so for instance, with the library crossing where we had the, uh, concept plan, I was able to just actually post that right within this, so you can it kind of is almost like an online server where you can have your backup documents uh, right there and on a cloud environment where, uh, they're then, you know, readily acceptable to the staff who have, uh, access to them. This cloud-based doesn't, at this point, allow us to push this out uh, to the public with this cloud-based, uh, you'd need to be set up as a, uh, kind of a user with a username. There is a, a method to do that, pushing it out through a budget book that, that then goes online, but that would happen later in the process, uh, more as we get toward, uh, uh, the spring town meeting. So it's, uh,
That's huge.
It is, it's really, really, really cool, it's, uh, you know, it takes a lot of work to build this out. But every year the capital program is a lot of work, and so one of the great benefits of this, the ones I already outlined, but also just, uh, that, uh, I think it's gonna help us make the information that's always really been available through the Excel sheet, hopefully much more accessible and understandable so that, you know, residents and taxpayers can have better, uh, understanding and predictability of what, what is ahead of the town in terms of future capital costs. Uh, next item, uh, the Newburyport Ad-Hoc Committee on Water Infrastructure, uh, I attended their meeting yesterday, they have another meeting. Next Wednesday, the fifth, that I will be at. And, uh, the meeting yesterday was primarily focused on a water treatment plant. They did not get into any of the Indian Hill Pipeline, the oh, that's funny, um, that line just appeared.
That's creepy.
It's a Kathy's iPhone. Alright, um, the, uh, the meeting next Wednesday is gonna be, uh, I think the Indian Hill Pipeline, not, I think, I know the Indian Hill Pipeline is going to be a primary discussion item at their meeting next Wednesday. So these are public meetings, they're accessible, they're hybrid. So, uh, you know, people could attend in person or via Zoom, obviously, so subcommittee of the Newburyport City Council. But they're public meetings and anyone can attend and they're accessible by Zoom, so, um, you know, in my comments, I've certainly been very clear that the, uh, you know, select board and the Board of Water Commissioners would need, you know, are gonna need to be uh, signatories to any new intermunicipal agreement, which is gonna take, I think, quite some time to work out. Uh, in part because this subcommittee of the council is not speaking on behalf of the city, they're one form of government within the city. Uh, obviously, the administration, how engaged they are, um, has a lot to do with, with what, you know, what we can expect to happen in terms of the new intermunicipal agreement. But it's a very substantive process, the presentations are very, very uh, interesting and there was a lot of discussion yesterday about, uh, algebra looms and the uh, various treatments that the, the city has, uh, needed to, uh, make to the, uh, reservoir because of the, uh, phosphorus and other, uh, other issues. Uh, let's see, this, uh, next one, Mast U T has endorsed, they haven't formally approved, but that's just a matter of getting the signature. Uh, I think the board probably recalled this from an update in the past, but in the, uh, permitting work that preceded the, uh, construction that's going on right now with the new crosswalk at Page and Pipes Dave. Um, it became known that at no point had there ever been established an official school zone for page school, I don't know if you guys remember that or not, but, uh, that had never happened, so part of the scope that we have for T E D was to get that school zone formally established so that it is, uh, legally enforceable and part of Mast U T's record, so uh, that's just about done and I wanted to just let you know, because with all the focus on the crockwalk, that's kind of what's visible, but there's also this, uh, permitting issue that really, I mean, it's, was kind of decades, so that, that, that's almost done.
And so is that a requirement for some of the positions of the crosswalk?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Uh, Pickball Courts, we signed the contract, uh, I think I reported that at the last meeting, we had a, um, initial meeting on site last, last week and we have the official pre-construction meeting coming up this Monday and, uh, uh, just yesterday, the, the contractor provided their, uh, uh, estimated schedule for work, the, uh, erosion controls were staked out in the field this week by the towns engineer, uh, because they had, uh, done all the weapons swagging and, uh, so the contractor's gonna be on site next week, they're installing the, the erosion controls. The Conservation Commission or, or their destiny will sign off on that and at that point they'll have notice to proceed and, uh, they'll actually be breaking ground in November. Uh, and the expectation is that the base course of paving is gonna be done by mid-December. Uh, which the compound did approve through an extension of their time of year restrictions, so uh, people can expect to start to see some real activity there, uh, pretty soon, so that's exciting. Uh, this, uh, next one, I know I briefed the board previously about the, you know, we talked, I think, at the last meeting about the Colbert Report. So we've since gotten the G I S data, so we'll be, uh, we're working with M V P C to get that installed as part of mine app and then, uh, once that's up, we're gonna be supplementing that with, uh, Colbert data from the River Road Study, uh.
And will this be available to the public or just?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it'll just be another layer on the?
Yeah, there's, I'm not sure, uh, there's an existing layer with, uh, stormwater infrastructure, so I don't know if it'll be a separate layer from that or if it'll be part of that. Because I think that's kind of primarily like pipes and, uh, catch basins. So I don't, I don't know if they're looking, throwing it as, uh, part of that or a separate layer. And then, uh, just to keep you apprised, the, uh, performance review process, which is, um, you know, theoretically annual, in reality, it's been spaced out a little further than that, but, uh, that is officially underway. I hope to get that started in, you know, over the summer, but it just, uh, didn't happen because of everything else that happens, so. But that's now started with a, with a timeframe set out and, you know, you're packing. That's what I have.
Uh, moving on to action items, item A is the F Y twenty-six tax classification hearing, um, says not before six P M, are you expecting your board to be?
Yes.
Okay.
It's off late.
Okay, um, let's move on to item C, um, I see Attorney Brewer is online. Um, this is a request for consent to allow her, uh, she's with Harrington Heath to represent the city of Haverhill. We live to the Whittier Regional Technical District. Hi Donna, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
So, um, you wanna explain the, the request here?
Sure, yes, so as you know, we, uh, are special counsel for you on water. Uh, although I have not worked on the water issues, Iria Fried in my office is your counsel on that matter. And I was approached a couple of weeks ago to give a second opinion on, uh, an issue having to do with the Whittier Regional Technical School for Haverhill. And I know since Wes Newbury is a member of that regional school that, uh, I wanna make sure that nothing that I do is going to adversely affect Wes Newbury. And that is the purpose of the letter that Iria sent on October twentieth. Uh, I will keep my work separate from Iria's work for you, even though the topics are entirely different. I am not going to be representing Haverhill in anything directly having to do with the regional district vis a vis the other members of the district. What I have been asked to do is just give a second opinion regarding an internal opinion of their city solicitor. So it's a very limited, um, matter for them and it will, uh, not extend beyond that.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yeah, that's a, I'm like, no.
Anybody else?
Nothing.
You have anything to add, Angus?
Nope.
Okay. Make a motion?
Is that a motion be to allow Donna Bro to be, this is a special, this is a boy status?
Um, no, that, that's a separate thing, that's where we are. So it's item C.
It's the second page of the, uh, letter, they're kind of transposed on the agenda, because I, well, logically, they kind of but anyhow, yeah, so it's page steward memo.
Right, so what would the motion be to allow her to represent Haverhill? We have no issue with that, how do you phrase it?
So if I may, it would be a motion to authorize Angus to sign the informed consent permit me to represent Haverhill while Iria continues to represent Wes Newbury.
We'll make that my motion. Second.
Uh, any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then would you have a related request on the special, you know, school employee?
Yeah, I guess I'm, could you explain it, I'm still not clear on the?
Sure, yeah, I can address that if you like, so from time to time, it may come up that, um, there will be, one of your abutting towns might ask us to do a small matter, like Haverhill is asking for me. Uh, and because she, the, the position of special counsel for water issues is not a special municipal employee, she should not have anything to do with any other matter having to do with another neighboring town. Uh, special municipal, municipal employees have more flexibility. If it's unrelated to the work that they are doing for you, then, um, they are permitted to, to do it, so would cut down on the number of times we come before you to ask you to give permission on something that's unrelated to the work Iria is doing for you.
And so the determination that it's unrelated, that would be made by you rather than the Angus or, I mean, I'm just wondering what the the control on that is?
Yeah, so there, I still may, um, for those matters that involve Wes Newbury, such as where you're in the regional district with Haverhill, we still need to come before you. But for something that doesn't affect Wes Newbury at all would be, uh, let's say, you know, Rowley is asking for an opinion on a bond issue that they're going to make. If it's, uh, an abutting town, then we would still need to, um, it, turn that down because of the breadth of being a municipal employee. But I'm Sorry?
You wouldn't have to turn it down if you come and make the same request you just did.
Well, well, not, it, we would make the same request we just did if Wes Newbury is in any way interested in that matter. But even if Wes Newbury is not interested in the matter, has no interest in the matter, it's wholly unrelated. Um, then we still couldn't do it because we're a municipal employee. So it, it opens up our ability to work for abutting communities without affecting Wes Newbury. That's all.
Thoughts, you're born?
I'm gonna get a little confused by, didn't we have this issue about a year ago on another one? It was something, uh, was probably not favorable, you know, that's the Newburyport water.
Right, and that we did not take.
Well, but there was a, a request made for it at the time too, correct?
Yeah.
And we said, no, thank you.
Right, and that in fact was not, it did not have to do with water, uh, that request was for a, um, it, it was for a dispute between the city council and the mayor in that one under their charter, their city charter, but because you were already involved in a dispute with Newburyport and we are representing you in that dispute against Newburyport, we did not take on that matter. And you did not give us permission to take on that matter. And that would, that would still be barred, um, that, we would still need to come to you if a request like that came through again.
It's not clear to me.
I, I'd rather see it on a case-by-case basis rather than a one shot covers all, I guess is my thought.
What would you think about authorizing Angus to determine is what should be brought to the board or we can just give approval? Are you comfortable with that Angus, or would you prefer? No.
Well, you know, I hate, I hate the bureaucracy, but at the same time, I, I feel like, you know, the board making a decision ensures that there's no second guessing after the fact. So in a way, I, I kind of like the board. Actually, now whether the special municipal employee designation, I think if I understood Donna correctly is if there's, if there's a direct interest that the town has, that would either be barred altogether or would require specific disclosure even with that designation. Is that correct, Donna?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's really for matters for which there is no, where the town has no interest. So it's a question of how, who makes that call?
Yeah. And how much does it really save to, to do that versus each time coming before and before?
Right.
I can put together some information on special municipal employees because the the law of special municipal employer designating them means that you don't, you don't have to decide who does it because there's no impact on you. Remember, like I just said, that if it directly affects us, then they have to either come before us or they can't take it at all. But because they're technically deemed a special municipal employee per the state, there are so many people that are deemed municipal employees that you wouldn't think of. This, she would just have to come back and ask anytime. Or Foxford or something like that, or had nothing to do with us. And when you did this, it would just make it so she was allowed to do that, nothing that affected Wes Newbury.
But if we had have done this previously last year and then the issue was Newbury Port, that'd give her the option that I can approach Wes Newbury is my question.
Well, no, because that had to do, well, I mean.
Well, actually, it sounds like, yeah, because it sounds like that was a dispute between the mayor and council, which was completely unrelated to Wes Newbury.
Yes, but we still would have had to have come before you for that, even with the special municipal employee because you are currently involved in a matter in which we represent Wes Newbury against Newbury Port.
Sounds like there's hesitation on this, or maybe just not the understanding of the implications.
I guess my question, like so many times, if we said no, how many times will this become an issue we have to revisit? Not many.
Yeah.
And I think it's more prudent to look at it a case by case basis and keep your eyes open on it. And my comment.
Yeah, this is only the second time it's come up in a year, so.
Ross, do you have any thoughts on this?
So if you were granted special, special municipal status and issue in the issue that you didn't think we had an interest in, would you be able to come and request permission from us? Or is that only in scenarios where we have an interest? Where you can request permission?
It, it's only where there is a direct and substantial interest of Wes Newbury that would be affected.
So if we say no to this, you can't just come when you need to ask us. It's just an automatic no. If we don't have an interest in it.
No, we could still come and ask you for permission, independent of being a special municipal employee. We, we, we could, as, as you just letting me work in Haverhill, it's not because I'm a special municipal employee. It's because of the concurrent representation issue, which is under the rules of professional conduct, not the ethics rules. So it's, it's a little bit different. I understand it's a bit confusing. But the special municipal employee status is something that applies to the position of special water council. It is not tied to even our firm. If we were replaced as special water council, that status would still apply to your other council, to your new council. I think one of the better ways of looking at it is if somebody is a special municipal employee and they're on the zoning board and they're an attorney. If they're a special municipal employee, then they can go and meet with the Board of Health for a client. Because the jurisdiction of the Board of Health does not overlap with the zoning board of appeals. If they're not a special municipal employee, then they cannot take on that representation. So that might make it a little clearer on the scope of what the special municipal employee status does.
Your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I sense there's still a lack of clarity on this and implications. So I don't know if we want to staple it and you can provide some materials for us to look at if that would be.
I think that would be really helpful because actually a, a couple of years ago, a few years ago, when, when Jim Glasser was new, I actually had kind of tapped him to look at this question because I found, you know, we have some things on the files about positions that in, in years or really decades past, prior select boards have designated certain positions as special municipal employees. I certainly don't remember them all, but I remember some library employees being part of that. I remember finding that in files and back when I was in consulting to cities and towns. Some cities and towns that I consulted to would designate me as a special municipal employee. So it's something I've had some exposure to over the years. And I remember asking Jim, can you, you know, go through, through the files? Because my understanding, and I think what Donna just said, I think reconfirms this, is it runs with the position, not the employee. So there are designations that if I remember it correctly, go back to the nineties of library employees and it's in the report files. And so I kind of wondered, what are the positions that over the decades have been designated, especially municipal employees? Is that, does that continue to be the will of the board? And I'd have Jim to look at that and he really never got. Now we got a man, so I think she's rather, well, basically is okay. So I think that whole question, I've always been a little puzzled by it. And I personally have not researched it closely.
Okay.
So I think that would be a good topic of, of kind of what is it? What employees or vendors have been designated in the past and, and is that appropriate?
Well, it's slightly different with employees and vendors, that's my concern.
Okay, yeah.
Whereas within town, that's one, but in particular with water council, that's, we've got a lot coming up with that. So I just want to make sure very clear.
Yeah.
And are there any negative impacts to Iria if we don't go forward with this?
Which is Iria or the firm, really?
So if you don't provide that that position is special municipal employee right now, that's okay. I, I will still go forward with your permission, with your informed consent with Haverhill. So it does not make a, it does not have an effect on us now. There's a, a little bit of twist. It may mean that whatever work, whatever I am paid for Haverhill, Iria can't share in that. But that, as I say, it's going to be a very minor issue. I don't really think that that's going to affect her. But certainly, we can provide you materials generally on what it is to be a special municipal employee. How it would help somebody who has a limited role with the town to have flexibility in their business to have this designation. And Angus, to your point, this town and cities are supposed to give to the State Ethics Commission what positions have been designated as municipal, special municipal employees. So that might be a place for you to start if you're interested in knowing what was done in the past.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
All right, so we're set then. Thank you for taking the time to talk with us. And I guess you'll communicate with Angus about the information and.
Yeah, so I'll get you that signed consent following this meeting and then I'll let you know when the kind of issue of the special municipal employee will be back before the board. I'm not sure if that'd be two weeks from tonight or it might be a little further out, given some other things we have going on.
Sure, thank you. And I can share with you Angus some ethics commission guidance on special municipal, municipal employees generally.
Correct.
Right, great. Thank you, Donna.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ray.
Are you waiting for?
I'm ready.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll go back to item A, which is the FY twenty-six tax classification hearing.
So every year, the state tasks us with a classification hearing. This is the part of the tax rate setting process where the select board needs to weigh in on a couple of decisions before we can go to final approval with Department of Local Department of Local Services in setting the tax rate for the year. So in doing this, I'd like to give you a little background just before I make your decisions. Wes Newbury being a small town, their decisions usually aren't too difficult, but you still need to go through them because they're required by law. So just to run down here, what we'll go through, go over the assessed values and how that broke down between the different classes. What I see as projected tax rate based on all the information I have at the moment. The board will then have to vote on the split tax rate between commercial and residential. And then a couple of assumptions that the select board will have a vote on. Followed by what I see as a projected tax bill for a median, single family residence. So again, as I said, this is a required meeting by MGL. And I'd just like to get a little bit of information before going to this. This is essentially the end of my business year where after this meeting, I can start looking at the next fiscal year and valuations and what's going on in the market. So this marks the end of just the whole year's work for me. Going to the next slide? Yeah, let's keep going. This should say FY twenty-six assessed values. That's my fault. But I looked at twenty-four months for the sales and time trended those sales, which means I adjusted the sale price to the date of assessment, which was one one twenty-five. And, you know, I look at the market and see how that's moving and I move the sales up or down just to get a better sense of how they were reflective of housing prices as of the assessment date. And again, that's one one twenty-five. So a sale that happened in July twenty-three might be adjusted, you know, eighty or ninety percent upwards just to be current with the, with the market. And overall, after I got done looking at all this and looking at the tables that drive all the valuations in my system, the overall valuation of the town went up ninety point three percent. I broke down these sales as I reviewed them and looked at how they're performing by building style, by neighborhood, by building grade. I also looked at some other, out, some secondary qualities as far as like age, condition and any kind of different uses that they may have. And just make sure that I'm not missing any pockets of valuation that are underserved or overserved as far as their value goes. So going into looking at the statistical markers, sales ratio is a hundred and one percent. So just a touch over what the actual market is, but again, goals a hundred percent. This is going to measure our accuracy as far as where we are in comparison to the market on one one twenty-five. Where if you have a house that sells for a million and you assess it for a million, that's a hundred percent. But we're just a touch over, but that's not going to affect the overall tax burden on the taxpayers. And it's just where we are as far as the level of assessment is. There is also the coefficient of dispersion where you want to take a look at your overall and then your different strata of sales. And you want to make sure that they're grouped tightly together, centered around that hundred percent. Because you can have a median sales ratio or an average sales ratio of a hundred, but they might be like eighty and a hundred and twenty percent and just, it looks really nice once you calculate it out, but you might have this disparity. So you want to make sure that everything is grouped close together. And so that's what the C O D, the coefficient of dispersion does. We're at four point one four, goals less than ten. The fact that we're under five shows that the housing market in Wes Newbury is very homogenous and there's not a lot of different, not a lot of different neighborhoods and things I have to measure for that would make it difficult to accurately predict the assessment. Most, most communities will come in closer to zero nine, but feeling good at four point one four. Finally, the price-related differential. This is a measure of vertical equity and making sure that if you're looking at assessed values for higher value homes as compared to assessed values to lower value homes. Let's say that the higher value homes are, have an assessment to sale ratio that's floating around like ninety-eight or ninety-nine or so. But then you have lower value homes that might be assessed, you know, about ninety-two or so. That's going to be a more progressive assessment and not very preferable as far as vertically. You want your lower value and higher value homes to all have about the same assessment to sale ratio. And so there's a calculation that you can do and that the goal is, you know, you want to get about one. And we're definitely right in there. So all the stats are looking really good.
Just out of curiosity, Christian, thank you. The, the goals, are these department revenue goals or are these regs or are these kind of industry standard?
These are D O R gold standards, but they're also, they come from the International Association of Assessing Officers. And there's a industry standard that they set.
Excellent.
You can see here, I've broken down the single family residents. These are detached family, single families throughout town. So it doesn't include condos or bad, big in area or commercial properties. And I've broken them down into percentiles and it just shows you where the market is moving a little bit faster than others and how that compares to last year. Again, with, as I said in pass, the market goes at different paces for different demands and different price points. So it's not really predictable. I just got to go by what the, the sales are telling me. You'll see that median, single family residence is just a little bit over nine hundred thousand in Wes Newbury. Commercial properties increased by eight point one percent. That's mostly due to the land that they're sitting on. The actual buildings didn't really increase too much. It's just the land that was there. Personal property values increased by thirteen percent of that's going to be mostly in the telecommunications and electricity transmission lines. That's where that's coming from. And again, overall, nine point three increase in the taxable value of the town. We're up to one point six seven billion now, which is best because we were under a billion right before I started. So it's kind of fair. That's a little bit of the background information about the market. Now I'm getting into more matters of the meeting where I have to talk about how the split in valuation went. You can see that the residential properties in town take up more than ninety-seven percent while the commercial, industrial and personal property is about two and a half. For, this is why I said earlier, that's mostly homogenous tax base. It's easy to write off the formulas that will really capture value well for the town, not making a lot of variance. And then go to the next slide there. You can see that in the past few years, we've had a steady climb for our tax bill. This goes to 2025. We were the 23rd highest out of 34 communities in Essex County in average family tax bill. So you want to be more at the top of that list, that those will have the lower tax bill. So kind of in the bottom third of that list. We, and I wanted to note that the average family, single-family tax bill for Essex County was 9,377 last year. So we aren't too far off though.
Christian, I'm curious, do you, having a day of looking at the county, which obviously has quite a variety. Do you, do you look at like more, do you have like a, kind of a comparable communities that are similar demographics or land use characteristics to West Newbury?
I mean, I take a peek at Merrimack and Groveland typically, but nothing, nothing too close because don't like to get too far into the taxing side of things and mostly just take the valuation. And this is just all background for educational purposes. So before we get into the votes and that we need to talk about. Things as things stand now, the projected tax rate with the potential free cash transfer on Monday is 1015. This is in comparison to the 1080 from last year. So we went down quite a bit in our tax rate, which is nice. I also want to compare that to what it would be without the free cash transfer, which is 1031. The free cash transfer, if not adopted, would result in an increase of $145.58 for the median single-family residence. Which is more a 1.6% increase over what they would see in the tax bill at the 1015 rate. Those are the first of the four votes that we need to address, which is the residential factor, which is the split tax rate for residential and commercial industrial personal property. There's a formula that I have to follow, which spits out the different permutations between, you know, the residential factor, which I've gone from 1 to 1.5 and measures up 10% on the chart there. And you can push that down into, you know, hundreds and thousands of, for the decimal places, but I've just broken that out pretty easy. Due to the largely residential valuation base, the having a split rate would adversely affect the commercial, industrial, personal property side of the town, the valuation base. You can see as we move towards the 1.5 residential factor, the maximum amount. That the tax rate for residential properties only increases or decreases by 13 cents. While the C I P tax rate would increase by over $5. Really burdening those few properties in town. And that includes the, the commercial properties along Main Street as well as the personal property throughout town, the transmission lines, the telecommunications. As well as the property owned by New England Power with the high voltage lines going through it. So the vote, if there aren't any questions, would be to have voted on the residential factor and one being a even rate and anything more than one would be a split rate.
Do you know how many property owners fall in C I P category?
I would say roughly 50 or so. You have about 14 personal property counts and New England Power probably has roughly the same amount of parcels throughout town. And then the few commercial business businesses along Main Street and throughout town.
And you know, in other towns that New England Power has property, if they're a split rate or, I mean, are they used to a split rate?
No, I, I don't know as far as here on the North Shore where in more bedroom communities. If they're, if they do go towards a split rate, but typically I've seen this in towns where you have a large, our commercial base to absorb the split rate. Where that, that ease off of the residential can be absorbed much easier throughout the businesses. We also get a larger reduction in the residential tax rate, but they have larger commercial base. So you'll see instead of going down just 13 cents for the max residential factor, it'll be more like a dollar or two. And so it's, it's sizable, but it's just not the reality of the tax base here.
Any questions or comments from the board? You want to make a motion, Ross?
Yes. And I'd like to make a motion to approve a residential factor of one. Is that right?
Yes.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right, second. Any further discussion on this?
The other exemptions and the open space discount that we need to discuss. First is the residential exemption. This is a exemption that benefits residents in the community who live there year-round, who don't have a, use the community as a, a second home here. Or rent their, rent their homes here. So you'll see this being accepted in the Cape or closer in towards Boston, where there is a lot more second home properties and a lot more rentals in West Newbury. If for that to be accepted or for it to work, it would see a lot of applications come in from almost every property in town for, to accept this exemption. But the way it would work is that you would only see a benefit of it if your value was under the average single-family in town. Which you'll see at 959, 700. Just because we don't have the stock of secondary homes in town. So this is another one where it's great for other communities and I just don't see it as being appropriate for West Newbury.
Any questions on that?
We've not voted that in the past, correct?
No, we have not adopted it.
So I'll make a motion to not implement the residential exemption.
No, I get to make this a positive motion. We all look down. It's another job.
Is that high? Done this a lot of times, I'm trying to remember.
We can make a negative motion.
Was it a residential exemption of zero recommending?
You can say a 0% discount or residential exemption, but
I'd just say I would vote to not recommend a residential exemption.
Correct. I vote to not recommend a residential exemption.
All right, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Next exemption is first of all, commercial properties. These need to be under a million dollars and have 10 or fewer employees to qualify for it. And I'm a big fan of this exemption as it usually benefits the property holder and not the business or the lessees. At that business. I just don't see that trickle-down effect happening in not a lot of communities to adopt this. That being said, we do have a few properties in town that would benefit from it.
But if they benefit from it, that means it's there to be made up somewhere else, right?
Right. It would shift the tax burden within the C I P class to the properties that do not qualify for it.
Again, not traditionally have voted on this.
Any questions? So what the motion being saying, to not?
To not adopt. That's the word. To not adopt. I will move to adopt or to not adopt.
Okay. I move to not adopt a small commercial exemption.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Last one here is the open space discount. Noted there that West Newbury does not have any open space in town. This is a certain class of land that is maintained in an open or natural condition, which contributes significantly to the benefit and enjoyment of the public. Such land cannot be held for the production of income or other factors set by the Board of Assessors. We don't have anything that's classified under that, so.
This is private.
Yeah, private property, but held for benefit of public or commune.
So Greenbelt would not?
They already receive an exemption as being just the nature of their, their business, their business capacity.
All right, any discussion or questions on this?
What is an example like elsewhere in the region? Every year I ask this question because it's just so counterintuitive because obviously
Well, I mean, you can have a 50-acre property and just keep 40 acres open, right? We don't have any, any properties like that?
The closest that we would have is at the young farm lane, but they're already receiving a better discount than, than what they would have preceded under the open space.
Because of the restriction on their property?
The restriction on the property and that it's all under 61A. So those valuations are a lot better than open space discount, which I think can only go down to about 20% of the market value.
Good. I move to not adopt open space discount.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, how do we do?
Oh, I've got one more slide. I've written it just in case. No, please don't adopt anything. If you did adopt something, I'd be running around up the panner fire. But you can see that with the median single-family residence, valuation of 99, 900. A tax bill for them will be about $9,235. It's 1.9 increase over the FY25 bill or $172.11. I noted there that the amount without the free cash transfer as well. Property tax exemptions are available in our office. We have exemptions for veterans, disabled veterans, seniors, for those that are blind. And there's also an exception on CPA surcharge. There are different qualifications on those and those are all available on our website, or you can come in and talk to Maureen in our office. And those are due April 1st, end of business day. After the third quarter tax bill goes out at the end of December, payment applications will be then due on Monday, February 2nd in the business day. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Christian.
See, item B, determine a backup date, time, location for the special town meeting attendance.
It seems far fetched, but we
No, I think it's wise to.
Yeah.
Do we want to wait for a week though? If we had to, I would prefer to do it right away. It's here Wednesday, but what do you think?
That'd be fine. I don't know. You know, subject to availability. I honestly don't recall why the 10th was asked about as opposed to later that week.
Can you give me any point on this?
I don't remember either why we talked about it, but we did. There was a reason. I have to think about it for a minute.
And so where are we thinking of having it? The high school? Will they be done with their volleyball?
So would we have to go to the high school if it wasn't a question of, what, what do we think is the reason for this? Postponement?
In the highly unlikely, well, and what we think is highly unlikely event that the actual attendance was greater than the state property there.
Right, right.
Just so you
It's more likely that we don't have a quorum than
I think that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which would mean we wouldn't have to go to a larger space, but we'd have to attract more citizens to come to the meeting.
I think we'll make a quorum. I mean, I think there are enough people interested in K E T A, you know.
Well, it, the quorum's only 90, so it's not, I, I don't think that's impossible at all. I think that's highly likely. But and I think it's less likely that we would have too many people.
Yep.
So I'm looking back at the correspondence with Jonathan Seymour. I had reached out to him on the 17th and I said, we'd let's see, I said, is there availability in the gym on weeknight later that week or the following Monday, November 10th? I'd like to know what dates are options that can work with the board to pick a package date and be, you know, he said, if you need the billing on the 10th, I have it reserved. So I don't know if he just maybe overlooked and I didn't pick up on it. I just, oh, well, the 10th is available. So, but, but he didn't specifically say later that week was not available, but he kind of didn't answer that part of my question early on.
Yeah.
So do we want to stay at the 10th at the high school unless it's available?
Or such earlier date and then we can reach out to Jonathan and if he says the 4th or 5th is available, just, I mean, the main thing is so if that was to happen, you could promptly say dates are
Can't we have, can't we have just among us two possibilities? If the problem is that we don't have a quorum, then we don't have to go to the high school.
No, just
We can just have another meeting at the
Yeah, hopefully people would just work their phones and get it for us.
Right.
Yeah.
If the problem is that we've got this huge order of people and we have grew the annex, then we have to go to the high school. But when we make the decision that we need to, during the meeting or postpone the meeting or whatever we're going to do. We can make the decision about where it's going to be as long as both are available. And I'd really rather not go back to the high school. It's just too difficult to do a meeting there.
And I would just remind, I'm not available on Tuesday for the whole, at the rest of the day. So do you want to move towards Wednesday?
Yeah, we can follow up with Jonathan and see if the fit.
Okay. I think it's good to decide before, yeah, so we're not like cuddling up there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, except that there's a, there's a certain reason for each one. It's not like we're trying to do this conversation at the meeting. We've already decided that if it's problem A, we do this. If it's problem B, we do that. So it's not really a
Well, that's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, that's what we're doing right now.
Yeah. Okay. That's not the plan. So you don't know if that's going to work. I think it should work.
Okay.
All right.
So do I have this right? If it's a problem that we didn't get a forum, we're going to go to Tuesday?
Yeah, I think we'll just work our phones. I mean, honestly, I.
I can't see redoing it without a forum. I because we're gonna lose people between post. Yeah, so I think we have to make Monday work for. And if it's too many people, then we'll look at towards that Wednesday. Yeah, if it's available, if not, following.
Tuesday would be the the fifth or the tenth?
It would, it would go to Wednesday, the fifth. Say it would go to Wednesday, the fifth, or the following Monday, the tenth.
Okay.
If it's, if there's too many people. I shouldn't say that. Not too many, more people, the better, but more voters, the better. If there's too many people to safely fit in the annex, that's what I'm gonna say.
Alright. Alright, item E is request to endorse the draft amendments to capital planning, financial policy.
And this is, uh, this would not be a binding vote, but I I hopefully the memo was clear. I just, I think that, uh. You know, the clearer that we can be with voters, that if the. Bylaw changes as proposed pass, that there would be a a very substantial. Uh, policy change to accompany the bylaw amendments to. Uh, basically, more or less, the role of finance committee would now have in the capital planning process, so. I know you had seen the draft of this back in uh September, uh when we were working the article review. And uh, just as we're getting closer to town meeting, it occurred to me that. You know, that was just a draft, and I think having, having the board's endorsement would be uh helpful.
And so would you intend to share this?
No, no, just more to be able to say it's, and if anyone wanted to see it, it's here on the website, but I think say that the board has affirmatively endorsed. Changes, even if, yeah, I, that's, that's the intent.
Any questions or thoughts on changes? Motion to endorse?
I can motion to endorse the revised capital planning.
Uh, it's a financial policy.
Financial policy, as president. Second.
Right. All in favor?
I am fine.
Great, thanks. So if uh the bylaws uh are amended, then this would be back before you per form a vote.
Uh, the policy?
The policy would. Although I guess, I mean.
I don't think we need to.
You wouldn't need to, okay, alright.
Um, the only thing of just the fifteen percent on the capital financing is that?
Uh, so you you saw Jenny's uh comment on that, um, it's. It's, uh. Let's see, so.
It's not page four, so.
Yeah, uh. So the way it's written is fifteen percent, which she's, she's advising, uh. So right now it's it's fifteen, so there's no change proposed in this policy. I I do think it's something we should talk about further with her present. It's, it's. There's a a number of different accounts uh between free cash and the various stabilizations. Uh, we're not counting OPEC because that's for a dedicated of future, but between uh. Yeah, general stabilization, capital, school stabilization. Uh, she mentioned her comment water, but that's really a different thing.
Okay.
So I think with with what you uh just voted, it's there's no change to policy, uh it's something that I think.
Bears further conversation.
Yeah, I think it bears further conversation. We know that the rating agencies are are very happy with the reserves the town has, but. I think so that we could talk about further.
Okay. Right, item F is a request to approve the financial policy regarding contract signing authority, and she.
I do have just uh one uh. Change I'd like to recommend from what is in the packet, uh so I'll pull it up and put it on the uh screen. This is on the page two of the draft policy. Uh, town council, he had, he had reviewed it. We've actually gone through a number of rounds uh of reviews with town council. And uh. I had made some additional revisions uh Tuesday, which I put into the packet in response to some comments I got from. Uh, Kate and Jenny, uh his only comment with my changes, which is what was in your packet, was uh. He said we should strike this reference, so I'll just read the section, so. Uh, notwithstanding which town entity is undergoing procurement and contracting for business services. All contracts above ten thousand dollars shall, prior to execution, bear certification of the town account pursuant to general law forty-four thirty-one C. That an appropriation of the amount of this contract is available. This is really, really important. We've been doing this in practice for a number of years. But it's not anywhere in policy, so with this, uh it would be in policy. The only change town council said is this specific citation is to do with construction contracts. Specifically at the general law. So he was fine with the language. He just said to strike this citation. Because it doesn't apply to things like, uh, you know, if we sign a contract for with TEC for engineering services. That doesn't, that's not subject to that law. We like this. Atestation because it makes sure that no one can contractually obligate funds that the. Without the town council saying, yes, those funds are available, we obligated, so it would just be with striking this clause that violated there.
Uh, I have some questions on the first page. I don't know if you guys. So under procurement, it says that the water department. Is not meant to go through the um with the chief procurement officer, but then in the contract, it doesn't also say that the water department. So right now the contract signing authority is the select board, and it doesn't mention the cases where that's not not true, so I think it might be good to also add that.
Okay, yeah.
And then I'm also wondering. If. Um, you know, we call out specific departments that that. Um, don't have to follow the procurement, but like what about the board of health? The library board, like elected boards typically sign their own contracts and. Um, I just think we need to be like very explicit on what for, you know, if the select board is the only board. Other than board water commissions, I think we should say. I think that's still about that.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Otherwise it implies that you sign them all. I know we don't have the ability to.
Yeah, or that you can continue having elected boards that shouldn't be signing contracts doing so, right?
Yeah, I think that's the bigger issue.
Yeah.
What what contract would the library boards on?
They've talked about like hiring consultants and vendors and.
But I don't think they actually have, right, right. I I think this, this has been an issue, yeah, going back. A number of years where, uh.
Whether it's subject to procurement and also contract signs. I just think this is an opportunity to make it crystal clear about what the arms are.
And we could table this and and.
No, I think, I think it's good to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions, um.
Well, you've gotta identify all those.
Yeah.
What's?
Yeah, so if you have, if we have other input, I think we should leave it to Anderson, and then we can maybe vote on final copy and then we can.
Sure, that would be, that would be good.
Um, I had a question on the procurement and the water department not being subject to it, uh unless they choose to and. It's agreed to by the town manager. Is it appropriate to say that that will be factored into indirect cost calculation?
I think that would be appropriate. It certainly would be, so. Yeah, and I I, you know. I don't want. That to dissuade them from working with the procurement officer.
Yeah.
I I've gotten that sense, as you know, in the past, I've offered on on a number of projects, uh to have, and not just offered, but suggested, recommended that. Town council review contracts, construction contracts, and that's been specifically declined in the instance of water contracts. And I I don't know if that's because they don't wanna incur the costs or they don't. Think it's needed, or I don't really know what the issues are, but they've they've specifically declined to have town council involved with review of the contracts and. As we know from advice from town council, we don't have any authority over that, so other than if town meeting was toured out. A bylaw in the future, uh which is something that I can talk about. But, uh.
Well, I'd make it there sometimes. Incurring a small cost for the review of town council could save you a significant. Uh, hit in the head, which we're taking right now, so. I think it's worth looking into.
I'm adding that note, I need to uh. Say it would be factored in the indirect costs.
So as this written, uh as this is written, the affordable housing trust and the water are the only ones that don't have to follow. Or use the procurement process outline, as you know.
Those are the only ones that I find in the either by, uh. You know, the state law with the water commissioner, the the town bylaws that uh have specific authority. To enter contracts.
Uh, in the following paragraph, where it says a certification from the chief procurement officer is needed, I mean. How can that person make a certification if they have not been involved in the process, you kind of?
Uh, so let me just make sure we made the right paragraph.
Paragraph that starts not with Sandy, which town entity, so that that presumes that could be the water department, I believe affordable housing trust.
Uh, well, it would be that. It was required more more than it's exempt, because so for us, it's affordable housing trust. It's not exempt from thirty B. There might be specific purchases it may make that are exempt from thirty B. If it's. If it's subject to thirty B, that's, that's, uh, this policy doesn't change that at all.
Yeah.
It would probably then choose to go through procurement officer because she's got the certification, knows how to navigate thirty B. They wouldn't have to, they could, they, you know, they could do it themselves. I don't think they would. I just, I guess I wanted to, you know, I put in the carve out on water because. We knew from the town attorney advice that they really do have independent contract signing authority under the nineteen thirty-six acts. And then I did a check of the town bylaws and saw that the affordable housing trust also has specific overdue in the bylaws to enter contracts. So I wanted to kind of acknowledge that. But they're not, that means they're exempt from thirty B. If they're buying something that was above the threshold, they would have to go up to bid.
Okay. Um, and then in the preface, it says the board of selectmen, and then further down it says select board. I mean, does it have to be what? Like the formal? Which is the board of selectmen?
The reason uh for that is, yeah, the preface is is citing the town manager act, which is, which says board of selectmen, so since it's a. Specific quote I I left in that.
Okay.
But we could, sometimes what I do is just put in the brackets and just say select board. That way it's like. So, so we we could do that, but. If I'm doing a specific quote, I I always put in the exact language, just being forward.
Chris, do you have any comments or questions on this? That that you want I to incorporate before we?
No, it's more just thought, yeah, you got the procurement officer. I assume affordable housing would available to us for that opportunity. Would strongly. Hope the water department at some point will. Consider the same. When you get somebody who knows how to. Do the procurement, the contracts and all that versus go struggle with it and. It's unfortunate the regulations the way it is, but it does give them the opportunity to use that, so.
Okay.
Well, they do, just just for those watching from home, you know, they they have uh. Engaged their consulting engineer to put together the bid package and they, so they, you know, for a major construction project, whether that's a a. Water main or or the break hill, water tank, that all went through procurement. That was all done by their third party engineer. But there is no oversight of that either by the town through its procurement officer or through town council, so it really relies on. The engineer with no, with no independent review of.
It's nice to get another umbrella of the town.
No, I agree with what you're saying. I just, for those who are watching from home, I don't want people to misunderstand. I think that. You know, there there isn't a bidding process. There is, and it's part of the contract that have with their engineer.
But to that point, we get sort of shut out of the. Uh, church street project because we have no authority.
Yeah.
And the first time that became an issue was on the contract to look to store stuff down at Ferryland. I asked the question specifically, is it in the contract? And you said, well, you had, you didn't know because it was their contract, and yet with the roads commission, you had to give them authority, so. There's a gap in in.
There is.
That, that that was number one.
Yeah.
Then the bigger gap comes up to what we're up against now, which the pavement thickness on the roads and everything, so. It does create a big problem.
It does.
Um, is there anything that could be added to this to to try to address that? Uh, I guess it's not gonna change.
It's a statute that gives them the authority.
You know.
The independence, I guess. I'm just about to encourage them.
Okay, any other? Comments? I think this would be great to, I mean, as these things come up.
Yeah, yeah, we tend to refine it.
That's great. Alright, so then you make the changes and we'll vote at next meeting?
Uh, sure, yeah.
Um, next item is a request to approve regarding the job title and function for the projects and programs manager position.
Alright, uh, so I, uh, what's in front of you in the packet does not actually change, propose to change the job title. I did, I was giving some thought to. Uh, potentially recommending a change to projects, programs assistant instead of manager. Simply because of the level of visibility of the the projects that this position. Uh, has overseen in the past with when uh Christine was here for the three years she was, uh. Helping the town and then to whomever we hired to replace the position. You know, it occurred, it it has occurred to me that. Project manager versus project assistant is a, is a difference. What I did is I did some, I proposed in language that, uh. Kind of makes it explicit that everything's kind of has a side and in consultation with my office that way. Uh, but what what I don't wanna do is let's say we hire someone. And they're hired as a project manager, and then they start to feel like. At the end of the day, they're not the, you know, that's what I don't want, uh, because, you know, the this board's pretty hands on. Other committees are pretty hands on, uh, but I think with the changes that I'm recommending here, I think it captures that. In the normal course of things, changes to a job description wouldn't go before the board for a vote unless they were for a position. The board appoints, uh, what's happened in the past is when job descriptions have been changed, they've been. Shared with the board in a public document so that you know what changes were made, but they haven't put to a vote. The reason I'm asking for a vote on this one is these these very first uh words here. When this position was initially created prior to Christine Wallace's hire. It was created as a full-time forty-hour week position. When we went out to, uh, when we posted the job and we ultimately hired Christine. She, who was by far the standout candidate and a uh a terrific, terrific person, terrific uh candidate. Wayne and I wanted to hire her, but she was very forthright in saying she couldn't commit to forty hours a week. She was a city member of the city council in Newburyport. She had a lot of other things, so she she said she could do thirty-two. So we hired thirty-two. Over the years she was here, as I'm always looking at the budget process to not raise money we don't need. After she'd been here maybe a year and a half, I I started to budget the position for thirty-two instead of forty. So it was designed as a forty-hour position, but that filled at thirty-two, so. What I'd like to do before we post the job is get the board's uh affirmation that you would agree. That if if we can find someone who's the strongest candidate, who's willing and able to contribute full time. I do think there's no doubt there's not much work to do, so that's, that's, but that's where I wanna be very. Upfront about that because let's say we hired someone at forty hours, that's a, and let's say just theoretically, we hired them at the very same rate Christine was at. That's gonna show us a twenty percent increase when it comes to FY twenty-seven budget, and I don't want you guys surprised. To say, why is this going up twenty percent? And and so I just wanted to be very clear. And and if we, I mean, I'd like to fill it a full-time basis. And and if we, I mean, I'd like to fill it a full time basis. But if we happen to get someone who, for whatever reason, could give full time hours, but was the best candidate, I'd like to have that flexibility as well. There are some other changes in here, which I'm happy to discuss. Why I'm recommending those and and really happy to have any input on that. Uh, but but the reason it's before you for a vote is really just that section.
And so you feel like we'll be okay budget wise this year because the positions have been filled.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, their vacancy would would absorb, uh.
I do have one suggestion, uh, under the essential functions that that second sentence that you added.
Hmm.
I I would like to see that up in the definition. I feel like the definition doesn't cover all. Like it doesn't have anything about infrastructure in there.
Hmm.
Just suggestions.
Yeah, definitely.
And just another comment, I didn't, I guess I just didn't fully grasp that this physician. Is representing all town departments, I mean, conceivably. Right, that in the past, it's been very focused on. Infrastructure and sustainability, but it could help the conservation department or.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
I think that's positive. Any questions or comments from you? But.
The first I had question was the full time unqualified part. I I I understand this dollar implications are not significant. I think it's got to be full time.
Uh, I'd be fine with just posting it as a full time.
Yeah, we should, we had to.
I prefer, I think you get a more dedicated, not no disrespect for Christine, I wish she was still here.
Yeah.
Um, but I think it gives you a opportunity to get people looking for full time employment. And I think the town in particular, at this point, you can use the assistance that that would offer.
Hmm.
Um, number one. Um, I had a question on a couple of the removed degree communities project manager that, but. Towards the end, the second to last, I have just two live comments. Talks about errors could result in delay, confusion. I don't even know what that whole. Uh, you got to go down to last paragraph.
Job.
Yeah, right there, errors could be. Then it would feel like a complete sentence. I'm kind of lost on what it's meaning.
Uh, so this is, uh, I think this is this, uh. It is unchanged from the current language, so.
I know it's, I know it's not.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, but it could, so, yeah, so it was so.
I think it's trying to say this is an important position that they made a mistake, it was really bad, so, but, um. So did this come from the call center?
I think this position was created before we. That.
But they, I mean, they.
So they would, yeah, so it would have gone, yes, it would have gone through that filter.
Yeah.
Yes, probably.
So that, so that may be in several position, job descriptions.
I just find it really awkward, hard, useless.
Random one sentence.
I, yeah, I don't even know what's there. Um. My last, uh, comment is right on the same page, so it talks about, um. College degree, college degree in engineering environment science, because planning a project management over later field is required. I think that should say preferred because if then they have work experience to back it up, because what they're.
Hmm, good point, yeah.
You could recruit people who might be very qualified from applying because they don't have the degree they want.
Hmm. That's a good, good point, Chris.
Ross, any comments, questions?
Hmm.
Okay. All right, so we do need to vote on it just because it's changed to full time or?
Uh, if if you'd like, I mean, I think with this input, I I would be very comfortable posting the job, so, uh, I don't know. We need to. Over the formalize it, but. Let's.
So, uh, what's our timeframe on this?
Well, with this, with this, uh, endorsement, I, we can post this and, uh. Uh, I would, we can post it, you know, first thing next week.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'd obviously like to get, uh, get the process moving.
So, but realistically, it's at least four or six weeks till somebody's on board.
Only if there's someone who's on, you know, who's currently between positions, uh. I think it's probably more like eight to ten weeks is is a more realistic timeframe. Between people giving notice and transition through a new job.
Hmm. And you still feel like we can swing the MVP grant if it's going to be January until we have somebody in the position?
I mean, we're, we're, I mean. Yes, right. I mean, just, you know, I, yeah, I.
All right.
Working like twenty eight days in a row and still, you know, it's just, it's, we're, we're. We're really busy, so, but I know I certainly, uh. Think we can, but.
Okay.
We we definitely, we need the people we have.
Give you an out.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's, yeah, I'm not working for now, yeah.
All right, I'll set it as minutes, um. So the first one is from September fourth. This is a meeting that we had a meeting of snap boobs. So these are a little bit light on. Hey, tell. See, um, just one general point, the content needs to be unfolded, usually just the.
Oh, yeah.
Um. Any comments or?
I wasn't there.
Okay. Ross, any motion, yes, to approve as unfolded?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of September fourth. Uh, the format change of underord and, uh, certain sections.
Second, all favor, all right, bye. Are you abstaining?
Yeah, and then I kind of put just their things.
Okay. Right, the next section is October ninth, men.
Hmm.
Um, so. Given that I usually have a lot of comments and I'm trying to dictate to Angus and Amanda, I asked Max to send me. An in word, so I just named my comments already. Now, but I don't know.
Are they in this document?
Yes, they are.
Is that a review too? So.
I know, but, yeah, but so does that, is that like too much, too many hands in there? I I think it's a good way to do it, but I just want.
I think it's fine. It's be preferable going forward, I think.
So will you just send to me after you've reviewed it and I'll add my.
Screw up, I think, correct.
Okay. All right, so it's not. Okay.
Doesn't bother me.
All right.
Thank you much for your time.
Um, I did have a question, Angus, um, on the, uh, updates, town manager updates on the pickleball. Uh, so three vendors attended the prebid.
Hmm.
But then you received sick proposals.
Yeah, it was not a required prebid.
Okay. So I would just say, um. Where it says Jennings reported that the last sentence, I would just say other vendors have also expressed.
Okay, yeah.
Um, missing a couple of periods in here. Um, and under C A. I think I. Some of my redline probably dropped here. It's after the the end of the first sentence, it's missing a period between meeting and read.
Got it. It's the end of the first sentence. It's just one sentence, so I couldn't figure it out.
There's two sentences.
Well, I know, but different. Because a period is missing, you can't figure out what's happening.
Right, those are the only minor issues I would, anything for you, Ross? Good.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October ninth, because I'm ended. Seven.
Oh, sorry, I just noticed, uh, the very last sentence, um, D, C, there's just a red line that was not moved. Oh, maybe I had that red line, sorry. So it's on the bottom of page fifty eight, right before G. How to strike themselves. That's why I suggested water department could utilize their own funds to pay for the expenses that that should just be carried for themselves.
Good.
Right. Uh, all favor, I, I. Okay, moving on to discussion, item A, um, so Steve Dwyer had a, um. Situation at home cannot attend tonight. Uh, this is on the police department recruiting, um, so he's talked to a consultant. I guess, do you understand what this consultant actually provides? And if we can just kind of generally talk about it and then we can wait for him to, um.
Uh. Most of, I met with him just once last week.
Yeah.
Uh, he's had a couple of additional conversations with Rebecca, uh, including earlier today, um.
It seemed like it was recruited, which I get.
Yeah.
The whole thing about the exams, like what? I don't understand how the exams factor into this.
Yeah, so one thing that that was interesting to me that I learned from Rebecca, uh, it it didn't come up in the meeting, we have the chief, but. But but I I was asking her about that. Is this like a, a standard exam? And it's not, it's actually something that's created essentially by the consultant on behalf of the department based on input provided. From the department, uh, and this is me paraphrasing literally third gen, so. And Dwyer to Rebecca, Rebecca to me, so, but but what she told me, which I was, uh. You know, I hadn't understood from from reading the written proposal was that they, uh, the consultant solicits, uh, direction from. The chief from, uh, he mentions, uh, Sergeant Parento, that they would give input. As to what type of questions would be asked in this exam and that would be part of the screening process.
Okay, so the exam is just a screen.
Yeah.
In order to determine which candidate should be brought forward.
That's my understanding.
Okay. And I'm just not sure how that helps. That's it's quite expensive. I mean, I.
It is quite expensive. That's what I don't get either.
Well.
Twenty five hundred bucks.
Plus.
Eighteen per candidate. I feel five candidates a year.
It's twenty five hundred a year?
I assume so.
That was per, per search.
No, no, yeah, it's not, that's not an annual fee, that's. So I did get, uh. So.
I think, I mean, what I would like to talk about is just telling Chief Dwyer that we don't want to hire anybody that hasn't been through the academy.
Well, that's the first thing I love. It said, because we we run through the academy, they take the job, we go here three months and then they.
Right, and while they're in the academy, we're paying for the academy and their wages, we're paying overtime to fill their position because they're not here.
This says our goal is to attract.
Yeah, but I would like to say the requirement is there, which I don't know how you guys feel about it.
Oh, I would definitely be on board with that. I just, it's.
Is that within our, um, authority to direct the pushing?
You are the appointing authority for police, so I would think so, but I, uh, you know, I haven't talked with with him about that.
Yeah, okay.
But I think he's got to be here if we're going.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so it's fun to introduce it so that perhaps at the next meeting, meeting action, I I would already talked about a little bit.
Then tied in with that is the question we've asked before is. How do we keep the officers we hired? I mean, those are very fundamental related. And my question for this consultant. Before we even think about engaging, have they read our unit contract? Because they would have to. Dissect it and and see, are we paying reasonable rates to local competitive communities? Because if you're not. You can interview people all day long and you're not going to put them in a position, so. We think we're in a good place, but he probably has a broader, uh. Depth of information on the local communities. And that that's the first step.
Yeah. I mean, I think a lot of our officers have gone to cities, which we'll probably hire. Tasks.
Which goes back to the point then, we should be paying for them to go to the academy and then. Jump over to some city and take a job.
Yeah. All right, so let's put this on, uh, he did say he's anxious to do this, right? Not anxious, but we want to move along, so it'd be on our next agenda and I think we'll be there to discuss.
Okay.
Uh, item B is to discuss the select, select board's position on article three. And future water department operations. So specifically, I want to talk about if we are going to make a statement at town meeting about this article, so. Who and what we want to say, but also, I mean, I know there's been, or I've heard there's been. Some, um, a lack of understanding in the community about the select board's role in all this, so I was hoping to just. You know, reiterate that the select board has no control over. What happened, how it happened. We're just trying to make the public aware of what happens so that we can hopefully. Engage the water department, get some changes.
It's not just the select board too, and the county, I mean, this is a water board issue. There are separate. People don't really understand that. A lot of people don't.
Yeah.
Facebook postings are pretty clear on that. So why didn't the town manager do something? Why didn't the select board do something? Because we have no authority to. When I think that statement has to be made at town meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Thinking.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just just trying to, you know. You know, I think the, in the FinCon booklet, their rationale, we hit all the points that we have talked about, our concerns about. You know, the way this happened, so I don't know.
But I mentioned it before that I thi- I think somebody has to say the select board had no opportunity to direct this. To approve the change order, to approve any of the payments who were not involved in this.
Yeah.
Um, I I think that's got to be very clearly stated. Um, not just the select one, it's town accountant, the town manager, this is a water department, water board. Um, issue that was created and being resolved by them.
So do you want to make a statement?
Well, especially, but if I have to, I'll come up with something. In case it allow me to speak at the time of the month.
I'm thinking about this, uh, no, I really am. I mean, I don't want, I don't want to put you in a bad position. But I think it goes deeper than just this one particular incident. Or thing, it it, because this has come up several times tonight about different things. That the water board is a separate entity, it's not controlled by the select board. And it it doesn't have to, uh, use the. I'm not.
Procurement.
The word I went, but you know, you know what I mean? It doesn't, it doesn't have to use a very obvious service that they could benefit from.
Hmm.
Um, and so that part of it sounded to me like they were cutting off their nose to spite their face. I mean, if you've got, if you have options to to do things in a good way, you should take advantage of them. Um, so and and I'm aware that there's an awful lot of history between. The water department and the select board and probably with town manager too. Um, so this is not something that's just coming.
Right.
Up here, so, so you don't want to be, Chris, to answer your question. You don't want to be in a position to be, uh. Trading blame with the water department for. What happened in this particular incident in the middle of a town meeting. It's not, it's not an appropriate discussion.
But it's an article that we could make a statement on.
You you can't make a statement on the article, you can only make a statement on the motion.
Well.
Well, and and there's, there's, there's some language that's really kind of. A little loose in some of this that it worries me, but when, because it's important for the townspeople. Understand that we're not voting on the article, that we're voting on motions and that they can be amended. And the article can be amended, but the motions can be amended as long as it's within the. The purview, so that's where the power of the town to affect policy comes from. Um, and to the extent that this is unfortunately a longstanding. Um. Problem between the water department and the select board and stuff like that.
I, I don't, I don't know that that's true, but regardless, I mean, I, the select board, we can make a statement as a resident. I mean, it's not that we can't make a statement.
No, you can.
Yeah.
You can.
All right, so, so the the main thing, it sounds like you want to get across Chris is that we have no control. That this wasn't something that we created or had any ability to intervene or.
In essence, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Or the town cannot move there.
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm not trying to place blame. But when you read the Facebook postings, they're blaming us. So I just want clarity on the fact that we had no opportunity to resolve this situation.
Unless someone at the meeting. Did that, in which case it would be out of order again. If they tried to place blame on you with the situation, um, with this project, that would be out of order.
But not just this project, I think the residents. Again, until I get involved on select board as much as I have, to really understand the clear delineation between. The water board and water commissioners and the select board, it's very difficult to understand that. They're two separate, it's like two businesses, it's like IBM and CBS. Uh, you know, one can't tell the other what to do whatsoever. Uh, I I think it's.
Well, okay.
I think I have to somehow explain the clarity.
Yeah, that, so that that's actually the point right there. If you, if you feel that it's important that you make exactly that point that you just made. That there are, there are water commission and the select board are two different en- entities and they do not tell each other what to do. And so therefore it was not in your purview to tell the water department and, but without. Try making it sound.
Finger, I just don't want them to think that we would.
Without making it look like, I know you're not trying to. But without making it look like you're trying to point the finger at the. But without making it look like you're trying to point the finger at the other side, which is hard to do.
Alright, any other points that that need to be made of this, I mean.
Well, you've been in the whole packet. Uh, yeah, I have a couple of the comments, number one, this is literally. The first time that I have seen change order number one in this package. And it was from May second, twenty twenty-four, so. That's kind of stunning in and of itself, I mean, um. So then I go to change order number two, and that's the one I. And again, this is a water board issue, but just as far as how contracts and change orders work. Be careful, I guess, uh, first of all, the change order is, it listed for an increase of a hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, but in fact. The problem is, there are also uh, change order credits back, you should never ever in construction where I came from. Put ads and credits in the same change order, because what it does is it diminishes the visual impact. Of it, any anytime we do it, they would throw it right back, because it's a way to make the damage look less damaging than it was, so. The line item for the police budget, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, only fifty-eight thousand was used. That should be a change order with a credit back of sixty-six thousand dollars, and then when you get to the paving line items. Those are a total add of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, so that's, that's where the damage was done, and the two forty-eight. But they put this all together in one change order with all the other liners, which are very minimal. To create the impression it's only a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar change, but it's not, you know, the issue that hand that they should be dealing with is two hundred and forty-eight thousand. The town or the water department was always entitled that sixty-six thousand dollars back anyways, it's got nothing to do with the the pavement. So I I find that change order is very disturbing also.
Yeah.
Best will be over there.
Well, I think also, the point needs to be made, yeah, they are separate, but the select board gave the water. Department six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of ARBA funds that are for the entire town, so. Um, so I do think we are on stage in this project, so I think it's appropriate to make comments on it.
Chris, though, I mean, um, as far as what would trigger a change order. I I think we would need to confirm, you know, because contractually, they not, might not be required to generate. A change order unless they go over the incurred funds. You know, so just because an individual item under or overruns that might not meet the criteria. I I think it's probably in writing somewhere, but my hunch is that a change order would only be necessary, I guess. If it goes over the the funding network.
Again, I'm not even gonna discuss this at town meeting, because this is a water board issue, or I write their contracts and they will.
Yeah.
Um, but within the contract, there was a line item, the police budget to be tabulated against it.
Yeah.
So we knew that was gonna come in last.
Right.
Well, they knew it, or should have known it. Um, well, again, this this issue is particularly disturbing, not only the ARBA funds, but we got involved early on. The water department came to us and wanted to buy all the materials in advance and stockpile them. And it got approved, and then I went to Angus, and we said, that's not really a good idea, and that's when the budget was two point eight billion, I think, roughly. And we agreed, and we convinced the water department not to do that, and to bid everything as one package, and it came in one point eight-ish. So we sort of accommodated them there, we gave them the six twenty-five of the ARBA. And then they took over and. That's not the discussion town meeting, believe me, I'm not going there.
Well, I'm glad, um, because, I mean, I was here when you discussed this before, and I understand. What the problem is, and 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 I, and I am sympathetic with with what happened, but the motion. Which is going to be on the floor, doesn't include any of this discussion, it says to transfer the sum. Of a hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents, none of this.
But that's the backstory, every single motion that's made, people get up, they make comments, ask questions, I I think it's appropriate for the residents to understand. Why this.
I don't think there's any way the residents are gonna be able to understand this, if it comes up on the floor town meeting in the context. Of a motion to transfer from the enterprise fund, unless they, unless they were. Uh actively involved in the entire.
It's it's in the FinCon rationale, in the FinCon booklet. It lays it out there, there's a, there's a bunch of information on the town website.
Why exactly do you want to bring this up at at town meeting and have it. Devolve into a discussion of what the, what the water board did wrong.
First of all, I don't, secondly, I agree with you a hundred percent, this is a water board issue, they're asking to take funds out of their stabilization, or whatever it's called.
Initially, they were asking the select board for a loan, recapture, so that that's what's the origin of it.
But if the conversation goes to. How did it get screwed up and the select board screwed up, I would like to sit there and say, I I don't want to talk about the change order in me. I want to just say, please understand, this is a water board, water commissioner issue, the select board, the town manager, the town accountant. We're not involved in this, and we have no legal authority to be involved in, period, that's about all I.
That's perfectly okay, if someone brings it up, ask the question, why didn't the select board?
I I think we have to say it upfront, it's out in the community already.
I should also bring it up because how egregious it is, I mean. If they don't, they're asleep at the wheel at that town meeting.
So Wendy.
They have been leaving that.
I I read the letter that you wrote, and I agree with it in in um, in at a high level, but it. It encouraged me to go back through a lot of the documents, and I personally have adopted a slightly different opinion. Of what happened that would conflict with your letter.
Mm-hmm.
I actually, and I don't, if if this isn't the venue to. Talk about all of this over again, I don't need to, but I actually personally don't have an issue with the pricing side of what happened.
Mm-hmm.
There's a formula in the contract documents, which is exactly what Tada, Tada and Howard used. Uh, to convert from um, area to uh, to tonnage. Um, it's the, it it's. You, I wouldn't expect the contractor to rebid their contract work. Just because we're changing the units, I don't think the spirit of the item was changed, just because essentially there's an overrunning quantity. So everything that they did, to me, makes sense. I I guess you can say that going from four to six inches of pavement, there may be, you know, that last two inches might be cheaper than the first four. On a, on a unit basis, but um. That all makes sense to me, what, I think the problem here, obviously, there was procedure of issues as far as communicating, you know, this should never should have been a surprise.
Right, right.
But the the the, the elephant in the room to me with this problem is the quantities that were expended.
Mm-hmm.
So, um. Using their formulas, if you, you can back into what they should have used for tonnage. They, if you hold everything else constant and just change, you know, the um, the depth. So I calculated that they should have used seven hundred and seventy tons. Um, in their estimate, uh, their last estimated quantities, which I think was in the summer of twenty-four. They, in their estimated quantities, had seven hundred and twenty tons as an estimated line item, which was above the direct conversion. They ended up on the permanent pavement coming in at one thousand one hundred and seventy-two tons. So that's a hundred and thirty-five percent over what they should have used, even taking into consideration. The abrams on each side of the trench, so. To me, they either got paid for full trucks of HMA that didn't all get put in place, or they put. If they put it all in place, they would have put in place eight and a half inches of HMA, can I, if you hold everything else constant. So to me, it was never a pricing issue, it was a quantity issue, and it seemed to me like Tada and Howard also thought that. They were on the the right track with seven hundred-ish tons. And for some reason, when they came back in twenty-five, they put down significantly more than was planned, so. I I, it just, I I think it changed the, changes the facts a little bit for me, as to, as to what happened.
I think the issue is the management of the contract, I mean, to implement a change order. Right, without getting a sign um, until a year and a half later.
Yeah, that's another issue we're gonna have to deal with later, Casey's point, the motion will be.
Yeah, but but, I mean, this is an opportunity for us to to talk about this, I mean, it's out in the community, I think, you know, it's important that we understand.
If somebody from the community brings it up, it's really totally irrelevant.
Well.
I mean, seriously.
Discussion about an issue, Casey, are you telling us we can't talk about it?
No, but I'm just asking you to. What what is the outcome that you would like, would you like the town to vote not to appropriate the money?
This is an opportunity for us to educate the town about what this means and and what our role in it is.
Well, I'm sorry, I just disagree with you, I don't think, I don't think town meeting is the appropriate place to try to educate the town about uh. A disagreement or a um, a a lack of understanding.
Okay, Casey, this is.
Between the the board and the water.
Feel, but this is our meeting, we are discussing this, and I I don't think it's appropriate.
And this meeting is fine, okay. I have no problem with your discussing it here, I just don't know that we want to recapitulate this particular conversation.
You already said that.
Town meeting.
Right, you already said that's not the intent, so we're just trying to talk through, this is the only opportunity we have to talk through this. Um. Alright, anything else on this?
No, I mean, to your, to your point, I mean, the not signing the the change orders. Obviously was a gap, it appeared to me that. That they basically said with change order number one, we're just gonna do a direct conversion that's net zero for change order one. Because we can't put a value on the actual pavement needed, because it could, it's not that they want, we wanted six, it's that it could go up to six. So it, to me, appeared that there was an implicit understanding that, yeah, PCO is net zero. But that there's gonna be a second one coming once we know what we use. Um, so why didn't PCO one get executed, yeah, that that is a misstep, is it material to what happened? Uh, I don't know if it is.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think the larger issue. Is that this is not the first time this kind of mismanagement has happened.
Yeah.
And, you know, the situation, the the water department or the water supply most super is, is at some point. The business is not gonna be able to continue to function. So at that point, either the town as a whole is gonna have to step in and financially support them, or something else, I don't know what that is. So, I mean, I feel like it's really important for the water department and board of water commissioners to get their act together and start running selected visits. That's what it is, you know, so if if they can work with us and identify these issues and improve them, I mean, that's my goal. That's, I don't think it's sustainable the way it is right now.
I think that's crystal clear.
Yeah.
And I just don't know how we get to where it has to go, but Peter, I'm never gonna be able to fund the improvements required within the water budget, it's just. Not realistic.
Yeah. Alright, so are you willing to make the statement, or can, I, I think you should.
Something to get everybody first.
Alright, Angus, anything you want to add?
Uh, I'll just say it here, it's not something that needs to be sent Monday, but just uh, for those who might be watching this meeting, I think uh. The representation prior to the finance department going out to long-term borrowing, that the, um, you know, the the failure to disclose. The expectation that was gonna go above budget was, you know, obviously a a significant blunder that uh. If the overage had taken place and that had been communicated timely. Uh, it's not just that it wasn't communicated, it was communicated that it was gonna be within budget, so uh. Uh, you know, we, if we hadn't closed the financing on it. A contract overage in and of itself is not a huge deal, it's the fact that, you know, failure to communicate and the fact that communication. Other than what what actually went on, uh, is really what what made it a very big deal, because once the financing was closed. In the long term, you then can't, uh, you know, there's no appropriation to pay the overage without this vote on Monday. And if the vote on Monday failed, uh, you know, we would have no choice in the finance department, but to go out and borrow a hundred sixty-two thousand dollars, which is a. A much, much, much smaller amount than a pound, whatever, go to borrow, of course, uh, uh, yeah. May not be relevant for what's before the voters on Monday, but uh, just for those who might be watching, I think it's a really important point.
Okay, uh, next item is discussion of any open items regarding the special town meeting. Um, we would draft motions, was, nothing came from Tim's review that you wanted to discuss, right?
Uh, on the motions, no.
Uh, but on the the special event, um, bylaw?
No, not the special event, uh, there was on the fee statute, there was, or the acceptance of a fee, MGL, uh, you know, I just wanted to. To, you know, make sure that, um, uh, you know, the board was in receipt of the opinion it provided, which does, uh, uh. Basically, I don't think I have a hard copy with it, but it does, uh. Drop of a distinction between elected, uh, boards, so for instance, partner recommission, board of health, uh. Uh, with their fees, if if this is adopted, it's not that those fees would need to now start going to the select board. Because that was one of the concerns, had to come up through the processes. Particularly with things like the field use reservation fees, where those have, you know, been subject to major discussion with partner recommission for, you know, many, many years. Um, because they're elected body, uh, with the adoption of this MGL. They would continue to have, you know, the ability to set those uh, fees, and those would not become the select board. Similar board of health, they set a lot of fees on, you know, solid waste and uh, those kinds of things, so I thought that opinion also was helpful.
Mm-hmm.
That may or may not come up on Monday, but I wanted to make sure that if it did come up, that we had a solid answer.
Yeah, that's what I was. Um. Uh, any questions on the motions, Casey, do you have any?
I found them to be pretty straightforward.
Okay. Um, so one thing on the MBTA article, um. So as far as I understand, the planning board is not gonna make a recommendation, is that your understanding, or have they?
So I met with Anne Bardine earlier today, uh, she she reached out to me, she, uh, and we met her for a little while this afternoon. Uh, and I assume when this article comes up, that the moderator would at some point call on them to make their.
I haven't received any information about anybody who wants to make any kind of a report.
Okay.
Are there?
I, we only have had two people respond to us so far, I was gonna send you everything tomorrow, we just have the library group that wants to send under the library article. And then there was one other board that wants to speak under their reports.
And for some reason, and I'm not sure what it is, um. Rob Phillips wanted me to talk to Anne Bardine about um, the planning board's take on. Um. Something, I said, I don't know what, I didn't talk to her, so uh, so I'm not sure what it is she wants to talk to me about, but. It has something to do with town meeting.
Yeah, on a zoning article, the planning board is supposed to make a recommendation at town meeting, so.
That's why I think, but she did, I mean, I'm, I'm waiting for her to call me, because he said she would contact me. But if she doesn't, I'll contact her.
So what 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 she told me today was that, um, they uh, would report the. The vote that they took in favor of the zoning, and to express their support of the adoption of the zoning. They don't have an event, it's my understanding to go, to go beyond that.
Okay, that's fine, I just don't sure.
Yeah.
So if we want to give a report on the MBTA.
Well, I think so, we blew some off, just a little committee did, now you end it up there, and why it's a, to see if it would be a good option.
I mean, that seems.
Anne did say she felt that your presentation at the planning board hearing was extremely good.
Mm.
And she said, if, uh, and, you know, she understands that you can't do PowerPoint slides at town meeting, but she she felt that some kind of a verbal. Recap of that would be very helpful, if that was something that, uh, that you wanted to incorporate into, uh, the presentation of the article.
Okay.
I think you have to give a report.
No, I do too, I just, I mean, we had to talk about it.
I mean, it's the most significant.
Yeah.
Issue on the, so I think it's.
Alright, alright, I'll do that one, since you're giving the article thing. Uh, alright, Angie, nothing else on the motions, yeah, with that, understanding that the motions may in time change.
So, and that, for that, for the other members of the board, uh, we did go ahead and post this afternoon a select board meeting for six thirty. Monday, so, uh, that gives you the opportunity to convene ahead of town meeting, if there is any last minute information. Uh, so you can be here Monday at six thirty, and then just move down to town meeting, uh. So you can be here Monday at six thirty, and then just move down to town meeting uh before seven.
Alright, make sure you check them first.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah, you don't wanna be wasted.
I asked you, gone through who's gonna present each article?
Yeah, we have.
Not gonna do this yet?
Yeah, we should.
Okay.
It's on the agenda for Monday, but if you wanna do it now, that's great, that's one less thing to do Monday, so I'd be happy for you to do that.
Um, except it doesn't say here who's recommending, who's bringing the article forward.
You are the sponsor of every article except for Article three.
Alright, it's easy. Alright.
Let's let's start with Article three then, so does the water commission have somebody who's going to present that?
Uh, I have not had that specific conversation, but I can.
I think you have it?
Yeah, yeah.
Could be surprised.
Yeah.
Alright, what about Article two, who wants to do that? Alright, Chris, let's just keep on order. Ross, you wanna do Article four?
Sure.
Which drink for you?
Water, Chris.
Oh, water, water water commission, I'll do Article five. Or do you want me to do the library one? Chris?
I'll do one when you want.
Alright, alright, Chris, library, Article six, Ross, invasives. I'll do previous.
Unless you wanna do M B A.
Alright, I'll do that, and Ross, can you also do the ones, your maybe a little light?
Yep.
Is that, does anybody know? Is that a nine tenths or?
Uh, we'll need to check that, if it's four fifths or nine tenths, uh as I recall, the issue is whether if the amount was specifically budgeted, even prior to your.
If the amount was budgeted but not spent.
Right.
Then it's four fifths, if it was not budgeted, it's nine.
I have a chart on the guess.
I think it's four fifths, but I I think we're probably safer to just call it nine tenths.
That's what we did last?
Yeah, uh.
I I don't recall anybody ever voting against that.
Right, right. But uh.
Alright, Chris, on the pen?
Oh boy, from a normal, they gotta slip that in.
I'll do Article one. Ross, wanna do Article twelve? Who wants to do major boards?
Simple.
Done.
Great.
Wendy, I missed the bunch, I believe, as.
We're just gonna, I'll think.
So I've got Article five with Ross.
Wendy.
Wendy?
Yeah. Article six is Chris, seven Ross. You, are you writing this down?
I have.
Alright, Article eight is Ross, Article nine is me, ten is Chris, eleven is me, one is Ross, thirteen is Chris. Okay, thirteen. Alright, item D is proposed charge for the reading of regional agreement amendment.
I think I haven't looked at it side by side with what was before you a few weeks ago, it's probably the same. It's just we got it officially from the MS B A, so I just included it, because that's that's the official roster of uh, school building, the uh uh, school building committee.
One question, the four members of the W D A?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was confused, no, that's the the M S, the school building committee is later, that's under correspondence, this is the proposed charge for the regi- agreement. Yeah, so this has now been circulated. This is intended to raise, it's intended to go to the uh school committee next Wednesday.
It's still to state whether the school committees of W D A are voting members or not.
Okay.
I think needs to get addressed, prepared somewhere in it.
Is your preference that they are not?
I think that's the intention, I just don't want it to get slippery.
Yes. Are you gonna be in this meeting?
I did uh hear from Maureen yesterday, uh, she reached out, maybe we ended up talking on the phone for a bit, she had uh she's gotten some flack from Rowley on this.
Really?
Really, uh, really, Rowley.
Really, really.
So uh, you know, they expressed to her uh some uh dismay that this would be a subcommittee of the school committee. And I I told her, I, you know, I think a lot of us at the prior meeting, were you at the prior meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think a lot of us probably would have felt the same way, but I think the legal opinion she had provided, making it clear that the, under this regional agreement, the amendments have to originate either with the school committee or with five percent of the voters of any of the communities. It's gotta be a subcommittee of this school committee. So uh, I guess Rowley, and I can't recognize everyone by name, but I guess there was no one from Rowley at the last meeting that Chris and I were at. So I think, I'm hoping it's just a misunderstanding, and that if they had been at the meeting, they would understand that it really kind of had to be that way, and that there's no intent whatsoever for the school committee to be like dictating this in any way.
Maybe them non-voting members would go a long ways.
Yeah, that's true, that's, yeah.
Yeah, it it works in tandem with the building committee, these two things are gonna be running. And when you look at the building committee, Rowley's got good representation there. And it is the only effective way to actually accomplish it, because otherwise, this committee, the rack, would have no standing.
Yes.
Okay, anything else on that? Uh, next item is solid waste calling disposal services contracts. So these are expiring the end of F Y twenty six. And so town council has advised us that the select board, not the board of health, has the authority to ask to keep these contracts unless the select board has delegated that responsibility, which we have not, correct, Angus, which the board has not in the past.
Not, not in the time I've been here, and that the prior, the existing contract, it was a six-year contract, so renewed since I've been here, I think it's it's worth, you know, looking through any of the older files, I don't, even if the select board had in let's say ten years ago, I don't think that would be binding, but I think we would wanna know about that, so um, but I'm not aware that ever happened.
Is that any of it share with the board of health?
No, it is not.
No.
Should it be?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, it should, yeah, we did, we just got, as you know, we just got it a couple of days ago, so it's been uh
Well, I think that the good thing about this is we have encouraged them to put it up to bid, even though they don't have to, just to try to keep the caller honest, and and they've been pretty resistant to do that, so this would perhaps allow us to um, to make that happen, which I think is good for the tax base.
They could be part of, the board of health, they could be part of the process on the bid, because they have the knowledge.
Right, anything else on this? So you're the only one who is on the list, but then? No? Okay, no, maybe we could go to the next meeting, you can even tell on this. I'm not joking.
I assume it would be, if I can go to the next meeting if I have to.
I just think it's important for us to have a seat at the table as this is starting to be discussed, so that we can add the process. I think there's a lot of scrutiny on the waste ton business after the over the summer, all the contractors that run strike and work and the trash picked up. Alright. Next item is uh discussion of potential policy regarding use of A I disclosure. I just noticed on that fire memo, the footer about it was generated by A I, did you see that from Whittier?
Yeah.
No, where?
Yeah, I had, I didn't notice it when I read the packet the first.
I wondered if you were cheating, and I thought you drafted that.
Wait, which, which?
Page eighty-two, right there.
Or are you the key to review?
That wasn't you, was it?
No, 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 that's interesting.
So she must have run through A I.
I'll be curious to kinda track that with the, with what I tracked it.
I'm sure there's very few changes. Anytime I use chat G P T, like the entire thing is different, like it's like half of the length.
Well, that's, you know, it's funny, I haven't, I had, I haven't looked at it, you know, I just kind of assumed it was, it was the same thing that we previously repeated, I hadn't noticed that.
But if it was just so good that she assumed that you. So this couldn't be.
Alright, so you wanna give us kind of?
Uh, yeah, it's just, obviously, this is an in in emerging area of uh you you know, technology is part of the world we live in, it's uh something that is uh, you know, can be used very uh effectively and uh productively and ethically in the workplace, but I think uh some amount of disclosure is appropriate. And uh, so I did uh take a cut at drafting a policy, I didn't put it in for tonight's packet. There was already quite a lot on the agenda, and it's not a front burner issue. But it's something that I think uh will be appropriate, and uh it is appropriate in any workplace, but I think particularly in government workplace, I think it's uh it's good to have uh disclosure if there is uh use of A I in the preparation of work product.
So this would be a select board policy?
Uh, I would, I would see it that way, uh, but I wanted to introduce it just for discussion before I went, you know, went so far as to kind of put a draft in front of you. Just since it's not something we've talked about previously.
So did this come up in one of those conferences you were at last week, or is it just something you've been made aware of?
Uh, just something I've been made aware of.
Yeah. I'm I'm curious, how to town send a policy?
Yeah, I I haven't researched that.
Yeah. Any thoughts?
He's probably just gonna go to chat G P T, now he's got the policy down.
That's what I did, that's what I did. Yeah, oh, that's exactly what I did, I had, which, this is the second time I like a good chat G P T, but I asked uh is it appropriate to have a a policy governing this, and uh they said, yeah, absolutely, and I said, if you drop me a policy, and they dropped me a policy, and then I said, can put it in a municipal context, and they tweaked it a bit, and this, and I I spent, I looked through it after that, but it, but that was kind of my starting point, I was like, that's really interesting, I mean, it's very.
So much time.
Well, it.
Much time.
It could, it could, it could.
I uploaded a lease for an office space into it yesterday, and said like, which of these clauses would be problematic for the tenant? Anyway, spit it all out.
Okay, yeah, wow, yeah, wow, I took credit for all of them.
Well, Whitty must have a policy, because they can put the disclaimer on.
Yeah, yeah.
Might already be ahead on that one.
Yeah. So yeah, I just, I figured I'd put it on for discussion, so that it's, you know, just to kind of gauge if that's something that that you agree there ought to be something.
Yeah, because of not only the types of things that it's appropriate to use it for, but like any process that like make sure you review it after, I mean, things that should be obvious, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Obvious this time.
Right. Okay, um, and then discussion on the progress of the work from home.
So this is something that's on the select board work plan for F Y twenty-six, it's written in for the second half of the fiscal year, so sometime uh in January to June, it is something I'd like to get done sooner, and this is another one we've had in draft form, honestly, since twenty twenty. And it's, it's a tricky set of issues, it really is a very tricky set of issues. But I think it's really, I will say, more than important, I think it's necessary to have a written policy to ensure that uh where there is allowance for telecommuting, uh, that there's uh you know, there's consistency in how that's administered. Uh, so this is something that does happen from time to time, uh typically on a one-off basis of uh you know, for one reason or another, sometimes it's not able to be there, they'll say, hey, I work from home, and it's, and uh, but, you know, there are uh uh to the extent it becomes more of a regular thing, I wanna make sure I have a clear policy, and I think that's something that should go through the uh uh, select board, uh, I would recommend it, and Rebecca and I agree on rest as a personnel policy. Not as just a select board policy, because it really is inherently a personnel issue. So again, I wanted to just have it on tonight for for discussion before putting a draft in front of you, we do have a draft that's gone through a number of rounds of revision at a staff level, uh, it's not something we'd broadly circulate, it's just within my office, uh but back in twenty twenty with COVID, we did have uh uh, form for telecommuting, and I have had any tenant employee has approached me requesting that I have had them fill out a form. And and it was, but it was put in place uh during a really difficult time with COVID, where there were honestly like five of us here in the building, and everybody else was remote. So it was done definitely under duress, and so that form, I think, was at least you know, at least laid down a marker, there was some, you know, some, you know, formal allowance for it, but it wasn't, it wasn't perfect. So I'd like to get something in place that's uh much more uh kind of reflective of the range of uh both circumstances and durations, that this can be appropriate, because it is, it makes a big difference if it's truly a one-off or if it's something that becomes like a every Friday kind of thing, and and at at times I'm presented with questions that I'm really not comfortable answering from staff, because I don't have a policy, and I don't wanna be in a position of just arbitrarily, oh yeah, it's okay for this employee, but not that employee. So the draft that we have, I think, is good, in that it draws distinction between the different types of positions, some of which can be done very productively remotely, others absolutely cannot be done at all remotely. Uh, you know.
Can replace the one main remotely?
Not yet, so, so anyhow, something we've been working on for really years. Uh, for a number of reasons, I'd like to get it over the finish line.
Yeah.
And uh, so I had had a draft initially dropped dropped in the packet for tonight, but with just the amount of stuff in front of you, it was, you know, I didn't wanna push it, but I didn't wanna just let you know it's something I'm I'm working to get get before you formally, I would recommend it as a personnel policy, that would require uh, public hearing or ten days notice circulation of staff, which I think is completely appropriate, that's how it should be for something like this. Uh, so I would think at your next meeting, I would be acting, have a draft in front of you, and have you refer to the hearing. Uh, if you, if you don't love the draft, you wanna tweak it before referring to hearing, you could refer to your next meeting. Once you refer it, it couldn't actually be voted until uh, you know, two weeks after that, be allowed for the notice.
I think that makes sense for schedule.
Good.
You think they have it by the start of the new year?
Yeah, 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 good.
Right. Uh, and of correspondence, uh, we have item A is correspondent Ray Kill, terrace resident, um I did tell her to re-rap, and I discussed this tonight, um, but that the correspondence would be in the packet, but I I do wanna just point out that um number four is saying that it was a mix-up at the town level, the ball was dropped, I mean, that is not true, it's up to the developer to bring the road forward for public acceptance, so um I just denied it to that email, but um.
And I'm glad you made that point, because I have the same.
And and the other, under that, item two, the assumption that because roads provide access to a public way, that means they would be accepted, and and we haven't identified criteria, so that's an assumption, we don't know that that would in fact make us be a desirable public way, so. So as I understood at our last meeting, we voted to approve um use of town services for this winter, um, and then to just broach the subject that we weren't um, really still on board with the um approach of adopting the M G L. Uh, did you share the email that I sent?
I shared, I didn't put it in the packet, but I sent it as a separate.
Alright, so does that address what what you had asked me to do in the letter? So if they continue this and it gets passed, then we'll have to decide if we wanna develop a process and criteria.
And that's fine, I just don't want them to go to the effort getting the votes.
Yeah.
During the hearing, and then select would say, nah, we're not interested, I think they should understand that it's problematic.
Yeah, so do you think the email was adequate? Okay. Um, alright, so the next item is that uh M S B A, um I I found curious that like these, these uh specific roles can be filled by like the same person filled two roles, doesn't that kind of defeat the purpose of having abroad?
Was it more than just Maureen, or is it somebody else who may look through?
Uh, it's also a little budget official or member of local finance committee, why the business manager from Whittyburg is on there? It says resident, but it just seems heavily weighted. Whittyburg.
Why, I thought the same thing, I went through it, I highlighted it in selling colors. And I did, anybody of Whittyburg color, I did uh independent appointments in another color, and then I did school committee members in another color. And I don't think it's heavily weighted, I think it's actually a very good committee when you get down to it.
How's that, see Jonathan in here?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's actually a very good committee, a good blend of people, a good blend of um perspectives and a good blend of experiences, so. Because I know somebody, early on, not here, but in one of the emails that we were getting on the committee that we're on was complaining about the makeup, the committee wasn't fair. So I looked at it and it actually seemed very reasonable. From my opinion.
By your thought voting.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, any future agenda items?
It's the final correspondence of fifty-eight months that they left in the reader draft.
Yeah.
There's been, uh, the subsequent correspondence of the property, and we're, we're working on that.
That's what I was gonna ask, if there are any follow-up.
Yeah.
Is it going to be addressed or?
Yes.
Do I wanna say that right now?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Um, future agenda items?
All right. I'm not sure it's an agenda, just a comment. The action items tonight, when I made a note. Way too much critical decision-making items there. To get through all these documents, I got through them and I read them. I didn't have a chance to really digest them. Just seems like an awful lot in this agenda. I mean, not a lot of items. But to appropriately address all these, I'm putting a lot of confidence and comfortable doing that with Angus and the staff. We'll put a lot of this together, but I like to read everything and understand it, and you really don't have the time with that much. And then my next question.
Well, can we just, so, so which items do you think were too, like, too in-depth or?
There wasn't any ones, the, the culmination of all of them together. There's a lot. If you haven't seen these things before, uh, try and assess these and vote them, um.
Yeah, so I'm trying to, to not bring anything forward as an action unless we've had it as a discussion first. Um, or it's something that's already been discussed informally.
Municipal employee thing, that was, you know.
No, that, that was clearly, but I mean, that was a.
Members to the capital planning, we hadn't seen the document per se.
No, no, you have. It was part of the backup for the article request back in September.
Okay.
There, there are a couple of tweaks I made, but it's, it's ninety-five percent the same as what was.
It just was a lot to get through.
It is. Now, there's a lot in here, yeah.
I guess it could be spread out on one piece, maybe not possible, just a comment.
Okay.
My next comment, this is probably a rhetorical question. Uh, we're gonna go into executive session, and then if anybody looks at the agenda, it's William J. Pap the third versus Borough and all. That's an executive session. The question is why? Why does that issue have to go to executive session? You Google that. There's more information gonna come up online than we're seeing.
But our deliberations about it could be part of a future legal action, so we don't.
No, no more so than, um. The building commissioners enforcement letter on the hospital on Arena Drive. I just think we do.
Yeah, that's not a discussion item. Yes, that's the distinction I would make. I, I agree, and I'm trying to not have stuff be under executive session that doesn't happen.
And I understand that we'll be talking about that and deliberated to a certain degree.
Yeah.
My frustration is bigger than this one issue, obviously.
Yeah.
And, um, I can think of at least three, maybe four instances where people, um. Attempt to litigate against the town.
Yeah.
It costs the town tens, tens of thousands of dollars, maybe even more. And the general public doesn't know it. They should be aware. At some point. We can go through some of these cases that we have resolved and say, here's what, I mean, we have people, everybody watching who sue the town because they think they can. The town spends a lot of money to defend it. The things get thrown out, the town's a lot of money. These people are just spinning the town's wheels and wasting our resources, and it gets tiring.
Yeah.
And the average person doesn't know it.
So you think having it as a regular open session item would, would change that?
Maybe just, maybe already saying they're kind of like creating them in an entity unnecessarily is so.
It does give these people a protection, yeah, yeah. Um, and again, if you, you Google that, you're gonna see everything we've got in the packet.
Yeah.
Almost everything from documents.
I agree with that in concept. I don't know if they're applied or if.
Maybe at some point we do a, a download of situations like this that have assumed town resources. Not only just financially, I mean, it always matters.
Yeah.
I mean, not hundreds of hours, something that what I will call frivolous, because I don't want to use another word, litigations against the town that spent thousands of hours, not hundreds, thousands and thousands of hours. And it's disgusting, and I get, it gets real tiring that people um, for no legitimate reason, just think they can litigate against the town, you know. It's frustrating, we have to hear these in executive section, and everybody else doesn't get the opportunity on this panel. So, I don't know if that's a future agenda item or not.
Well, I think it's a good point, and, and I think the way that it's written with the citation there, if people wanna look it up, they can, you know.
Sure hope they do, because it'll blow your mind if you find it online.
Yeah. Okay, anything to you, Ross? Anything you wanna talk about in the future? Right, I move, we go into executive session, um. In accordance with MGL chapter thirty, section twenty with, twenty-one A, seven and twenty-one A three.
Second.
All in favor, read I.
Well, I.
Leader, leader seven, none. Uh, and for those who are on Zoom, the board is, uh, recessing to executive session. And we'll come back to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment. Thank you.